Take two. What's up, Kansas City? I'm your host Glenn Bryan Frisell. Today, we are taping at the historic Lincoln Building, home of Cascade Media Group, right here in the 18th and Vine District, Kansas City, Missouri. Today's special guest is seeking election on the April 8th ballot for school board candidacy, Director of Board of Education Hickman Mills School District. Should she win, she is one of 10 candidates. She will serve out a three-year term. Ladies and gentlemen, please give a warm welcome to Hickman Mills School Board candidate Sandy Sexton.
Thanks. It's nice to be here.
We are glad that you could be here, Ms. Sexton. Nice to have you. Could you tell us a little bit about why you are seeking election to the Hickman Mills School Board?
Well, I am a lifelong resident of Hickman Mills School District. I'm a product of the school district. I graduated in 76, kind of the tail end of the baby boomers, went through the whole elementary through junior high and high school process. I think I really got intrigued when I was allowed to be on the five-year strategic planning committee and met Dr. Carpenter and have seen some, I think, some new life coming back to the school district. And I think he has a vision to bring our school district back to full accreditation and excel like we used to have.
Now, Ms. Sexton, that's excellent answer. You say that you have ties to the Ruskin Heights area? Were you born and raised in?
I actually, I grew, yes, I grew up in Terrace Lake Homes Association, which is on the western side of the Hickman Mills School District.
Is that past the Burke going down?
Yes, yes, it's further down Red Bridge. It's all, it's like 114th and Cleveland. Raised there, grew up in Terrace Lake. I had a few years where I, I moved within the metropolitan community, metropolitan area city, but home is Hickman Mills. And so I'm now living in Ruskin Heights Homes Association, which is only about a half mile from Burke Elementary School. So I, I've kept it within, within the area. The reason why I'm running, I get asked all the time, "Oh, where'd you graduate from high school?" And I say Ruskin, and they look at you like, "Oh." And I don't, I don't, I, I want to be proud again, or I, I'm still proud. I want others to be as proud as I am about what the school district is all about.
Ruskin has some pretty good memories. Can you tell us what it was like, Ms. Sexton, walking the halls as a, can I say your class year?
Sure, yes.
1976?
Yeah, 1976. Primarily then, it was majority white. I mean, there were, there were probably maybe, let's see, we, I think we had like 475 in our class. And so I think we had about 15 to 20 African-Americans. So we weren't totally diverse. Now I know it's quite the opposite. It's probably...
Who was your class president?
Oh, who was it? Danny Williams, I think. Our vice president was Derry Benedict. And I've been instrumental in the last 15 years. I'm kind of the glue that keeps the class together. I'm the communicator. So I've done the 25, 30, and 35-year class reunions. And it's much easier with Facebook and email and stuff to track down that many people. But, so I, I keep people in touch, which I enjoy doing, you know? It's just a part of, of, and it's amazing how many people are enjoying finding out the news and find, you know, attend the, we have some fond memories, you know? And, and at that period of time, a majority of us literally went to kindergarten through high school together. I don't, you know, we weren't as much of a transient society as we are now. So it's fun to dig up the old elementary school pictures, class pictures, and point out, "Oh, that's what you looked like in first grade," or "That's what you looked like in fifth grade." So it's, it's, to me, it's just a home. And I, I was very proud of Hickman Mills at the time, and I want it to be that way now.
Certainly didn't have Facebook and other computers plugged in while we're walking.
Oh, no.
So that new modern technology has definitely aided us. Can you, you said that you worked at Metropolitan for a while?
I worked at Metropolitan Community College. I retired there a year ago, December. I worked there 19 years, working in the IT department, 15 of those 19 years. So I was instrumental in, in, in a supervisory role of managing the student technology, making sure computers were where they're at, making sure things were operating, making sure networks were, you know, identifying where network jacks and where wireless access points needed to be, et cetera.
And you also went to college?
And I went to college. I, I tell people I was on the 20-year plan. I graduated in Ruskin in 76.
Wait a minute, were there fraternities or?
No, 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 no. Well, no, don't think, no, I was, I was out doing life. Well, you know, it's one of those things. Actually, I didn't know what I wanted to do in 1976. By the time 1996 rolled around, IT was becoming very popular. And I, I always enjoyed computers, but in 76, we didn't have, there were mainframes. If you wanted to go into computing, you, you did programming. And I'm not a programmer, you know? But by the time 96 rolled around, information technology was out there. There were degrees offered in information technology and management, how to, how to take the applications that were developed over those 20 years and how to put them in the workplace and how to use them. So in a way, I was born too soon. The technology finally caught up, or I caught up with them. And, because I didn't start, I didn't actually deal with a computer until 1989. And that's when the PCs started coming out. A lot of my stuff, I was learned self-taught. Finally, in 92, I started working for the Metropolitan Community College, which gave me the incentive in an academic environment to, to go ahead and, and finish my degree.
Have you evolved to any civic or community activities specifically related? You mentioned Ruskin Heights Homes Association.
Ruskin Heights Homes Association, I'm a lifelong member of Terrace Lake United Methodist Church. We're a small Methodist church on Red Bridge. I've been the treasurer there for about 20 years. So I've been managing their finances, put along with their finance group, et cetera. But that's a budget of over $100,000. I maintain the payroll and, and make sure all the bills are paid, et cetera.
For the next five minutes, Ms. Sexton, let's focus specifically in on your vision for the Hickman Mills community. A Kansas City Star report in September of 2012 cited a drop-off in academic performance leading Missouri education officials to lower the Hickman Mills School District provisional accreditation status. Even higher criteria by the state are supposed to be in effect with the provisional accreditation status comes into review again in 2015. So the bar is being higher as we speak, rates. Ms. Sexton, what is your vision plan for increasing educational standards, performances, and regaining full accreditation status?
As a member of the school board, technically, we're here to adhere, make sure that our school district is adhering to policies and procedures. But we're also, our only employee is the superintendent, if, if it's on the school board. I am fully supportive of Dr. Carpenter. When I first met him, when he first came aboard in July, I think of 2013, I think it was, he had a meeting with our Homes Association. We invited him. Very transparent man, a very articulating person, and has some out-of-the-box ideas. And I, I did some study on him as to where he came from, from Newton, Denver. Dennis Carpenter?
Oh, Dr. Carpenter, yes.
Dr. Carpenter.
Did you do studying off the computer?
Yeah, well, what I did is I, I got into, when I started thinking about running for school board, I wanted to see what his background was. What was, what, why was he so special compared to some of the other candidates?
A couple of Jason movies were filmed in his hometown.
Really?
Yes, I thought that was special when I read it.
Oh, cool.
But you...
Well, anyway, so...
You believe he's instrumental in increasing?
I think he's going to be very instrumental. He has a new program. Well, I got to serve on the strategic, five-year strategic plan, where he allowed about 40, what he called stakeholders, community members, faculty, staff, clergy, to give input. He was seeking input on what this community is all about. One of the things that a majority of the people didn't realize was the history of the Hickman Mills School District. How we started with, we were the first consolidated school district in the state of Missouri, where four country schools got together and merged and made a large school district. And, and I said, "That's something that I think we should be proud of." And we should at least know where our roots are so that we know where we're going. He got from that five-year strategic plan a sense of, we started as a community. We were small, you know, started as a community. We've now reached into, we're basically an urban school now, which there's no problem with that, but we've got growing pains to go with that. We still have a majority of people or older generation that still think of us as a community. And if they don't have children in the school district, then they don't know what's going on. And I, I was one of them. I do not have children in the school district. So I, I've lived in the school district most of my life, and I was very proud of it. But I didn't realize to what extent things had changed until now. And he has, I think he's got some great ideas that are out-of-the-box thinking, talking about changing grade, grade levels and, and adding so that we, we will be the first school district, I believe, in the state of Missouri that's going to be offering for this coming school year to educate all the pre-K students in the district. We should be number one. Now, the president and the governor has given ideas of, if we do this, there will be some financial incentives. But I don't think anybody has taken the lead like we are in the sense of, "This is going to happen." We're going to take the urban, which was a junior high, and repurpose it as a four, four-year-old and kindergarten. Half of the, or, half of the four-year-olds will be there. All the kindergarteners will be moved there. Then the current Freedom Markley Childcare Center will be the other half of the four-year-olds, because there has been a waiting list. So the idea of being able to educate all the four-year-olds, statistics show that if you get them in early, the chances of them staying in school will be greater. They'll have a better head start.
You sound like you have real compassion for the arts of being an educator, not just any educator, but a well-informed caring educator. Ms. Sexton, Hickman Mills School District, once located in a thriving area, has watched over the years as businesses have packed up and left. Banister Mall and Hypermart have been closed several years now. How important is it for school board members to work with business leaders to form partnerships to address the community's business concerns in moving forward?
I think it's, it's very important. But I don't want the business leaders to assume that they can persuade a school board member to vote one way or another, just because they may have some financial influence or some, you know, "We need to do right for the children." Well, I, it's, it's kind of sad to watch Banister Mall being built and watch it being razed in my lifetime. You know, in 30 years, I could see it built, and then now it's gone. Cerner is moving in. There's a lot of whole new speculations as to what it can do to the school, what it could do for the school district. You know, typically, in 10 or 15 years, our, we'll be putting out graduates that could be potential employees of Cerner, and which is a very, it can be a high technical, upper-management type positions. There seems to be more focus or speculation on the housing in our area. We're finding in the last few years that, at least Ruskin Heights and some there's, there's not as many vacancies as there used to be. There's more people that we're trying to get in there to rehab and get things going that way. But yes, it's important that we partner with local businesses, because they're going to want to know, you know, they're going to kind of guide us as to what they expect to see in future employees. And so I think education has something to do with that, too.
Okay, you did mention Cerner.
Cerner, and I think that they're working on, you know, I believe that we've got a total of $2 million coming from that project to the school district. And I know that the, some of that money may go to enhance our, our science labs, our math.
So we don't get an amusement park?
No, I don't think we're going to get an amusement park.
The science labs and, and?
Yeah, yeah, so I, and, Dr. Carpenter has taken this all into, when he was talking about looking at how to redefine our schools, our buildings, usage, whatever. One of the main complaints was, well, not a complaint, but they're, they want to make a freshman center out of Smith Hale. And so they want to move all the ninth graders there. What the statistics found, that if a student flunks one class in ninth grade, they cut their chances of graduating by 50%. That is a lot. And part of the reason they feel is, the student, if the seventh, eighth, and ninth graders or, eighth and ninth graders are together, they don't see any physical change between going from eighth grade to ninth grade. And part of that is, ninth grade is a whole new ball in the sense of, it goes by credit. Every class you take is a credit now. Eighth grade...
That's very important.
You could, you could flunk, and you still may get moved on, but in ninth grade, you start...
Have a different consequence.
Yes. And so what they're focused on, they want to get the ninth graders together, together to focus on every grade counts now. You know, if you, if you decide to skip school or you flunk out of one class, you may not, you know, and they say two flunks is even, even worse.
If you ask people, many will agree that there is still is a sense of community in Hickman Mills. You talked a little bit about community being important and increasing provisional accreditation status. I like to say the lean-on-me philosophy, or even more importantly, what's the movie, Won't Back Down, something?
Yeah, I, I don't remember the name.
With Rosie Perez and Viola Davis?
Yeah. Well, the other thing I see is, we send our children to school, but school isn't the only responsibility of educating our students.
Yes.
Community has to be a part of that. We, listening to Dr. Carpenter and the statistics, we know that there's a lot of students that don't have the structured home life that maybe we did growing up, as I as a child. Times are different. So we, and also, we've got some students, and this new plan also is going to build in a alternative school. Because of the economic, social economic senses that we have in our school district, there may be high school students that are the only breadwinners. So them going to school or putting food on the table, it, it's kind of a, it's a tough call. So one of the alternative school ideas that Dr. Carpenter has is putting something in place so that a student who wants to graduate, but may not be able because of timing, can shift their schedule and maybe go at an even to pick up a class or things like that.
How does that translate to you getting out and working with the community?
I don't think it does. I mean, I think that the community also, just working in the community, some of these students don't get the affirmation. They may not get affirmation home, "Man, you're doing a great job." Or, you know, "How are your grades doing? What are you doing?" That's where I'm talking about, the community has to be a part of that, whether it be volunteering in the schools, help mentor, or do community volunteer work with the students. I mean, there's several different avenues, and Dr. Carpenter's encouraging more people to, to be more mentoring and, and care about students. Because there's a whole, whole generation out there that, as part of the Homes Association, I work with people who may be able, may can't afford to go out or physically can't go out and write leaves, but are looking for, for someone to, to help them with that.
I read something about your resume, and I don't want to ask you this off-camera. You could just say yes or no. Did you know Nick Dutcher?
Yes, I knew Nick Dutcher. He was a graduate in, ooh, 89? No, I don't remember what year it was.
Oh, you're aging him. 98?
Actually, it was, no, it was 92, wasn't it?
98.
No, it wasn't with you then.
Yeah.
Nick Dutcher was a cool man, and he helped me greatly at the 50th anniversary tornado memorial. 50th anniversary done. We had a gathering where all the tornado survivors came back for a 50-year reunion. And we also redid the monument to show, because I know when I went to school, you know, it had this Ruskin Heights brick monument sitting at 111th and Blue Ridge. It had a little plaque on it. Yeah, well, big deal. Had "Love, Faith, and Spirit" or something on it. I didn't really know what it was all about until Nick got me onto it, and we started learning that that monument was for the tornado survivors, or it was a memorial for the tornado people who were killed in the tornado. And there were 44. And so at the 50th, we decided, because when I went to school, we climbed on it. We didn't know what it was, you know, we didn't know it was...
At least you didn't smoke on it.
No, no, I didn't do that, but, but we, you know, that was uncommon for us to have yearbook pictures and take pictures of, of people sitting on the monument. So then this, in 2007, I got to, fortunate to be able to work with Nick. And he was very much enthusiastic about the Ruskin Heights community. He was also a graduate. And so we decided to make it bright and have the monument look like it is today, where it says tornado, Ruskin Heights Tornado Memorial. And then we created Tree Arbor. Because I know when I went to school, they had apple trees up and down. I think there were crabapple trees that went up and down that median. And of course, 50-some years later, they were kind of worn and bedraggled. So we, we raised some funds and put new trees down there. And at the base of each tree is a plaque showing who passed away and, and their name. So they'll ever, they'll always be remembered as someone who died in, in that tornado. So there were a lot of things happening, but Nick was, he was awesome.
He sold me a book by Alexander DuMoss, Three Musketeers. My, I think sophomore year in college. The old Banister Mall, very, very nice guy.
Yeah.
How will you work with current school board members to accomplish your objectives?
Um, I, part of mine is I'm not afraid to ask questions. I'm also one that will do research, and I will, I will listen to both sides. Because I, I can't make a total judgment on, on certain things like teacher salaries or things like that unless I know what the, what information's out there, you know? What's been done in the past? How do we compare with local school districts? You know, I can't just take one side. I want to, I want to hear the whole thing. I think working with the present board, I look forward to it. I really enjoy Mr. Lowe, our president of the school board. Also, Mr. Osman, you know, he's up for reelection. And Ms. Memes, she's up for reelection.
Will you work with the school board if you're not elected? And I don't want to oppose it. I haven't opposed it to other candidates.
I think, yes, I think in my role as an office manager and proudly serving on the five-year strategic plan, I've got a newfound interest. And, and I think now I have made acquaintances and friends that I can make a difference. I don't have to be on the school board. And you know, it's one of those things, if I don't win this year, there's always next year's elections.
Wow, that's the attitude.
Yeah, that's, that's the attitude. I, I firmly, I'm not...
Do you believe in magic? Yes.
Well, and I, and I firmly believe in the school board, in the school policies and procedures.
Ms. Sexton, I have one more question, and then I'll give you the final words.
Okay.
Ms. Sexton, Kansas City Star articles released this week point to not-so-sound business policies and procedures being practiced by members who sit on the Hickman Mills School Board. Some of these practices are detailed in the audit March 4, 2013, reported by Missouri auditor Tom Swiger?
Swiger, I think.
Swider. You yourself have been a vocal critic on Tony's KC, saying that you were appalled by certain candidates who had, who have had state of Missouri tax liens and other debts. You said, "Now, how can voters support these candidates if they cannot even keep their own finances in order?" Do you have any further comments regarding these reports that were made public on what you have said or on your website?
You know, my research has showed that there are several candidates to, and I, and I, I don't know for sure if they've already been settled, but I have either had unemployment benefits overpaid that they've got to pay back. They've had state department revenue liens placed for collections on, you know, past, past years, 2008, 2009. Some of them, and I was, I guess I was surprised. I, that some of them, I'm thinking, how, you know, if they've got this, now, if they've cleared it up, then I apologize for ever bringing it up. But I couldn't tell by looking that those have been cleared up, that they may still be outstanding. And if they are still outstanding, then I don't understand how, one, they could even run for school board. Or two, how can they clear conscience, help, or decide how to spend school, Missouri state taxes if they're not contributing to those taxes in, in payment? There was even one current school board member who even has garnishment of wages. So I, I'm just, I'm really kind of surprised. And, and...
Would you suggest they get their finances in order, then come back and run?
Well, yeah, or does the school board, I, I guess I would like to be, if someone could educate me on, if that's the case and they've been cleared up, I'll be the first one to apologize. But if they haven't been cleared up, why doesn't the school board check into that before they came to run for, for a school board election?
Were you conscious as a student in 74 or 75, did you know who your school board members were, were they your presence in your school?
Yes. Some of them happened to be parents of some of my fellow students, classmates. So yes, I, I was aware, you know, did I really, I mean, I thought, I kind of oohed and aahed. I thought, "Wow, they can make a difference." But do I know to what extent? No. Did they have a, is it the same respect as it might be now? I don't know. You know, I, I don't know. I mean, this election has been somewhat in, not turmoil, but that audit just really blew things out of the water. And I'm disappointed at...
And you caught a new, where that was going, some of it before it came out?
Yeah, I had, I had some, you know, word of mouth hearing things. I had reporters started calling me, and it's like, "Well, you know more than I do." You know, you kind of learn these things. But I think the disappointment I saw from the audit was the superintendent at the time. Whether she took an active interest in the day-to-day business of the school district, it doesn't sound like it. Policies and procedures are there in place. And if they're not being monitored by someone watching, well, sure, they can slide. You know, it's just like, for me, being my, IT is my background, you know, I, I couldn't understand why they couldn't keep track of where iPads were or where things. And I know it's easy to do, because I, I had to keep track of them at Penn Valley. And it's, it's easy to lose sight, but you got to stay focused and have an inventory. And so those are some basic things that I'm just like, "How could that happen?" You know, so I don't, the past school board president, I'm somewhat frustrated because of what I've heard about contracts and how it took the school board twice, or the auditors twice as long to do our audit of the school board because information was being kept from them until finally subpoena had to be. But they weren't kept in proper, you know, certain contracts weren't kept in the files at the office. They were kept in somebody else's home where they were produced later. So I think there's some discrepancy going on that disappoints me, you know? As a school board, if I had been a school board member at that time, I would have been felt duped, you know? And, and I understand that one of the school board members had to invoke the sunshine law just to get information that he should have been pretty to as a school board member. So I think there's just a lot of, there was a lot of things going on that the integrity wasn't there. And judiciously, the policies and procedures weren't followed like they should have been.
Wow. Well, I would like to say before we wrap up here and give you the final words, that being an IT manager certainly shows, I've sent letters to every candidate for Hickman Mills School District. And you saw the letter. It was pretty lengthy.
Yeah.
A little more than cutting pace. As soon as I sent it, you replied back within seconds, I would say. And you told me, although you might have to reschedule, you, you said that you were very eager to
Yeah, yeah.
Come and represent your candidacy. I'd like to thank you.
I've known, you know, I mean, I'm, I live with my iPhone. It's with me most of the time. I receive work and personal emails day and night, you know? And I, I try to be forthcoming. I, I see the importance of technology in the schools. From past information that I've heard is that technology in the school district hadn't been updated as it should have been during the audit period. It, money was set aside, but never, they never did anything with it. I walked into the school district and, and my observation, because I'm in IT, they were working on a computer that still had Windows XP and had Groupwise on it, and had Novell on it. All of those are all non-supported now. Groupwise and Novell went out of business five years ago. You know, Windows XP is now longer, will be supported this year. And those were just little observations that I made. And, and so I'm sure the students are frustrated. I've heard from some of the faculty members that they get... I've heard from some of the faculty members that they get this class full of iPads, and they wanna all hook up to the wireless, and the infrastructure can't take it. And so then they get frustrated at the iPads, but it's not, you know, trying to get them to understand, no, it's not the iPad's fault. It's wiring clauses and stuff back behind that haven't been kept up, so that.
Well, I'm not even gonna talk about the computers we had. Video we're supposed to see and not be able to see.
Yeah, and so, so infrastructure is another thing that gets overlooked.
Yeah.
But I was glad that Dr. Carpenter brought in his own IT, IT person.
Really?
Part of the reason was, there was resistance from the current IT staff. And I, and I know why, cause I went through that same resistance when I was at MCC. About five or six years ago, we saw the writing on the wall that we had to change from a Novell operating system over to Microsoft. And when you have been in the IT department a long time, the red end is Novell. And then the blue was Microsoft, and we were always like, no, we don't want that blue W, you know? So we had to, we had to switch. Major undertaking, major learning curve. If you're in the IT department, and if you can't keep up with that learning curve, then you've kinda, you're kind of obsolete. And my understanding was that when he brought in someone new, there was current IT staff that were opposed to it, to the change. And I really think part of it was, they got comfortable, and, and I was the same way. Got comfortable, complacent with Novell, you knew it like the back of your hand, and then you, you always say, you've gotta forget everything you know. And, and work with the active directory and work with uh Microsoft. And I, I understand that. So also, you know, I've heard resistance from Dr. Carpenter, some people don't care for him. Because when he came in, he brought in a whole new leadership team. Which is typical of any CEO of a company when they come in. They're gonna bring in people that they trust, that they know, that can do the job. And, and so change is tough, it's resistant, you know, we're at a, a point now. Where uh something's gotta be changed. When Dr. Carpenter brought out the moving forward presentation. First question I asked him is, and what happens if the school board, cause we were in a work session. What happens if the school board does not um receive this or, or like this plan? I said, does that mean our accreditation's going down the tube? And he kinda like, well, sort of. I mean, we've got, we're on a downhill year here of doing something to get some changes, so that we can come fully accredited. I think we're on our third year of a three-year period.
Well, thank you for updating us. I understand that is one of our primary goals. Do you have any final words to our viewers of What's Up Kansas City? I know you have a website where they can get more information.
I've got a website, um it's www.sextonforschoolboard.com. But also, if people ask me, I'm also supporting two other candidates, um not financially. But if you ask me who to vote for, I will tell you, it will be uh Carrie Palmer and uh Bonne Memes. And myself, and we're the top three on the ballot list. So uh wish me luck, and I, I looking forward to it.
April eighth, you have no excuse not to vote, Hickman Mills School District. Watch this video carefully, make your choice. My name is Glenn Frizell. Check out all of the Hickman Mills School Board candidates online at www.wetsupkansascity.net. And remember, the sky's the limit. If you aim high, that moon, and you miss, at the very least, you would have landed among the stars. Thank you for your time, take care.
Thank you.
CMG wants you to always remember, the victory we call success goes to the best prepared. When you invest in your community, you're really just investing in yourself. Thanks.